This program is sponsored by Medical Arts Hearing Instruments, 52 West Street in Lemonster. Locally and authentically providing better hearing and quality of life since 1978.
50 PM, and we have a public hearing on C-76 before the Finance Committee. I'm David Cormier, Chair of the Finance Committee. Is Pauline Cormier also on the line? Who is the clerk?
I'm here.
Pauline is here, and Counselor Angelini, third member, are you here as well?
I am present, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. This is Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Requested detached loan order be adopted. This is regarding the No Town in Fallbrook Water Treatment Plant upgrade. And I'm first gonna, I'm required to read the loan order, and then we will proceed from there. The loan order reads as follows. Ordered that $6,557,600 is appropriated to create the No Town in Fallbrook Water Treatment Plant. Limitation costs incidental or related thereto. That to, that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Mayor is authorized to borrow $6,557,600 and issue bonds or notes therefore under General Law Chapter 44 or any other enabling legislation and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws. That such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the city unless the Treasurer with the approval of the Mayor determines that they should be issued as limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues as defined in Section 1, Chapter 29(c). That the Treasurer with the approval of the Mayor is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust established pursuant to Chapter 29(c) and in connection therewith to enter into a financing agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise to contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof. And that Mayor is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out the project and this vote. Any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount. And I'm gonna ask, is Roger Brooks on the line?
I am, Counselor.
You know, I think you alluded to this, that this was coming in the past, and from a financial standpoint, I do believe that we have the revenues, the revenue stream in place already to support this loan order, but I'd like to give us a little synopsis of this. That would be much appreciated.
Sure. Good evening. So, this particular SRF loan application has been submitted and approved to do upgrades at the No Town Water Filtration Plant, as well as some housekeeping at both Fallbrook and Distributing. We're hoping to do the filtration media at Fallbrook and Distributing, and at No Town, we're looking to add a filtration process called an Active Flow System, which will enable us to avoid having the high THM, HA5 water quality issues we had when we had high organics in the raw water coming into the plant a couple of years ago. We've done a pilot testing on this. We're finalizing the report to send to DEP, but we're optimistic that this is gonna be a real positive way of eliminating that problem and providing a quality of water that we feel will make the residents happy. It also will replace the underdrains, which have deteriorated. Every 10 years, you need to replace the underdrains up at No Town. The underdrains tend to build up a little residue, and then you have a problem with them breaking. Two of them were recently restored. We have one offline at the moment. So what it does do is it impacts the amount of water available. You know, if we had a real heavy drought, we'd probably be looking to do some kind of odd-even watering. We haven't had to do that at the moment. Something that the State has encouraged us to take a look at, but for the moment, we're still gonna go and operate as we normally do. So, this particular loan, we did the debt service increase in February and March with a rate increase. There's no further rate increase anticipated as we look at it today. One of the things that we were able to qualify for is a principal forgiveness on the principal debt on this loan. So, Lemonster would receive a principal forgiveness amount of $865,000. So you'd be paying back 500, 5 million rather, 691,000 instead of the 6.5 million that we're borrowing. One other thing that may or may not happen, we're hopeful that the federal government will do another stimulus program similar to the program in 2000, excuse me, 2009, 2010, which gave principal forgiveness at varying percentages depending upon the type of project. And those are for shovel-ready projects, which both the No Town project and also the project we're still working on at the wastewater plant was split into two separate projects, one for clarification, one for the aeration, and we're hoping the aeration would qualify for stimulus treatment as well. So, these, these projects are already funded. There's no further rate increase anticipated, and their upgrades that we think are gonna have a long-term benefit to the drinking water quality, and it will minimize the impact. The raw water goes through different stages during different years and different seasons, and this will smooth that out and provide consistently tremendous water. So those are the, those are the highlights of this. If anybody has a question, happy to answer it.
Okay. All right. First, I'll check with members of Finance, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
So, Mr. Brooks, just to reiterate, is this, this is, there's gonna be no rate increase to the taxpayers?
The rate increase was implemented and passed in March.
Okay, so nothing new, nothing extra that's coming out of pocket. This has all been arranged for?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Counselor Angelini, do you have any questions?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief at this point. I did have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Brooks last week. We had a lengthy conversation about this project, and I just wanted to publicly thank him for the work they did in order to get this loan forgiveness. Amounts about $850,000. It certainly takes a great deal of burden off of the city, and I know he's had a long career, custodian of our water supply system, and I know you're heading into the retirement time, Roger, and I just wanna thank you for a wonderful job you've done for the city of Lemonster, and we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other members of the Council have any questions or comments at this public hearing? Once again, any other Counselor? Okay, seeing none, I will go to the public, and I will ask, does anybody in the public, would anybody in the public who's on the line like to speak in favor of C-76? Once again, would anybody from the public like to speak in favor of C-76? And for the third and final time, would anybody from the public like to speak in favor of C-76? Would anybody from the public like opposition to C-76? Once again, would anybody from the public like to speak in opposition to C-76? And for the third and final time, would anybody from the public like to speak in opposition to C-76? Okay, seeing none. I just, you know, once again, Roger, I just wanna, you know, echo, you know, the comments of the Ward Five Counselor, and, you know, thank you for all you do for the city. I think you make all of these things very self-explanatory, very self-explanatory and clear. And we have the revenue stream in place for this, and I have no, I have no further questions or comments. And I thank you very much, Roger, for being on the line with us tonight and giving your explanation. And if I, if there's no objection, I will ask that we close this public hearing.
Thank you very much. It's 7 o'clock, so we're gonna call the meeting to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic of America.
For which man? One nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty, justice, and law. Okay, I'll now conduct a roll call of the Council's present, starting with Counselor Freedom.
Present.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Present.
Counselor Shalaflo Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor, Counselor Feckley.
Present.
Counselor Angelini.
Present.
Counselor Aringer.
Present.
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Counselor David Cormier.
Present.
And I shall be recorded as present. I noticed that there are no records to approve this evening, and with that being said...
Well, Mr. President, Mr. President?
Yes.
This is Counselor Feckley. I actually do have the minutes of the special meeting of June 17.
Okay.
I did receive them very briefly, however, they are in order, and I ask that they be placed on file.
Very well. Thank you very much, Counselor. I would now ask for a motion to recess.
Motion, a recess?
Counselor Cormier, do I have a second?
I'll second, Pauline Cormier.
Pauline Cormier, second. All those in favor of recessing, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. We are in recess, and I think Counselor Cormier, you had concluded your hearing, and we now have a 653 hearing by public service.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. 68-20. National Grid requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public ways. Vinton Street. National Grid to install one SO pole on Vinton Street, beginning at a point approximately 20 feet south-southwest of the center line of the intersection of Mechanic Street and continuing approximately 270 feet in a south-southwest direction. For request of customer at 17 Vinton Street, National Grid will remove a tree guy and install a new stub pole with an anchor. C-2-84 will be set approximately 43 feet south of Pole 2, and an anchor will be set approximately 6 feet from Pole 2-84. Location approximately as shown on plan attached. Is there anyone here from National Grid?
Yep, I'm here.
How are you tonight?
Very good, thank you. Jay Luthier.
Okay, Dave. Do you want to give us a little overview of the project here?
Uh, sounds like the customer is requesting to have a tree guy removed, and the tree guy is what supports that pole on currently that comes down Vinton Street from, what's the main street up there?
Mechanic?
Mechanic, yeah.
Yeah, Mechanic Street, sorry, thank you. So, in order to remove a tree guy, we need to come up with an alternate way to support the structure, and we can do that through either push braces, or in this case, a stub pole. We could just put an anchor on it, but it would fall right in the driveway of 17, so we need to put a stub pole on the other side of the driveway of 17 Vinton and anchor it that way.
All right, so is there a, where a pole there already?
Uh, no. The pole that we will be installing will be taking place of the tree, essentially, which we, we no longer put guys in trees because it tends to kill them 20 to 50 years later.
Okay. All right, so this is a request of the, of the customer initially.
But it sounds like maybe the tree is, is past its life expectancy and needs to be removed. I'm not 100% sure, but that would be my guess. That's why we remove tree guys nowadays. Typically, trees are tied and...
It says request of the customer at 17 Vinton. I just wanna make sure that's a request of the customer because we've had issues in the past where all of a sudden you see something going up, and, and a neighbor will say, "That's, we didn't authorize that, or we didn't know about it." So I just wanted to be sure that it was in fact a request in 17 Vinton Street.
Honestly, I wasn't the designer on this, but that's what the notes from the, I believe Mark was the designer, so I believe these are Mark's direct notes from that, so...
Okay. All right, I'm gonna go with what's, what's been provided us in the, in the original petition, so, and that's what it says. All right, thank you. Is there anybody on the Council that does have any questions or comments regarding this request?
Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Hi, Dave. Thank you for, for calling in tonight. I just, I'm hoping that you can make some notes somewhere there for the, for the installation people themselves. I've had a couple of calls up in this same area of, of the company doing some work up there, and the, the homeowners getting stuck with a bunch of cleanup, as far as trees, shrubs, branches, things that have had, have been piled up. So I'm asking if you can make a note somewhere on your files that when, once the work is done, that the area should be cleaned up of whatever debris National Grid should leave as they're doing this.
Our standard practice would be to remove the cable that comes out of the current tree.
Okay.
That, that goes to Pole 2, which is the pole that is currently there. So we would typically remove that cable. We would install the new pole and the new cable, and the new anchor. As far as the removal of the tree, if it's on private property, we wouldn't do that.
Okay, well, what I'm, what I'm speaking about is, is there was just some work done recently. Tree branches were cut down, shrubs were cut down to make way for the work that National Grid needed to do.
Okay.
When they left, those branches, shrubs, and everything were left for the homeowner to take care of.
I will, I will make note of that, but I've never seen us not clean up, or one of our contractors clean up, but I will definitely make note of that for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Counselor Cormier, if you could provide us with an area, then we'll put something together from our committee and present it to National Grid.
Certainly, certainly. I will do that. I will provide with the exact address and, and the pictures.
All right, perfect. Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other...
If you have, if you have pictures, and you could email them to me, I can put them in with the ticket and, and make sure from my end that gets taken care of properly.
We'll do that through the committee, and the clerk can forward it to you so that it's all, there's a paper trail to it.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Counselor, Counselor Angelini has a question.
Okay, Counselor.
Uh, Dave, I'm, I'm just looking for some clarity. So, is this pole currently on private property?
Um, not from the looks of it. It looks like it's a pole that's just barely off the roadway, so I would guess that that's in the town's right-of-way.
Well, the reason I ask is you referenced that if the tree has to be taken down, that if it's on private property, you know, so that, that's what raised the issue, so I'm trying to determine, obviously. And the, the new anchor that you intend to put is gonna be put on the same, at 17 Vinton, or it's going on an adjacent piece of property?
No, it's, it's, the new pole and the new anchor will both be on the town's right-of-way in front of 17 Vinton.
Okay, that's fine. All right, thank you.
Um, if you look at the drawing that was included, it, it pretty much shows specifically the new pole as well as the new anchor on, on the town's right-of-way.
City property.
Yeah, all right. Like I said, when you, when you mentioned the tree being on, potentially being on private property, that's what raised, raised my question, so, okay, I'm satisfied.
When tree guys were put in, yeah, when tree guys were put in years ago, they weren't always at ideal angles, and sometimes they were off to the left, off to the right, depending where the trees were, so...
Very good. Thank you. I'm satisfied.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Any, anybody else have any questions or comments today? Okay, all, everybody set? All right, I'll go to the public. Is there anyone on the line who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Again, is there anyone on the line that wishes to speak in favor? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Hearing none, Mr. President, I declare the public hearing closed.
Thank you very much. We can move on to the 654 hearing?
Yep. 67-20. Verizon New England. Request permission to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary anchor, guides, and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following public way over Franklin Street. Relocate one solely-owned pole number 2.5-1 to a point on the northerly side of Franklin Street, approximately 320 feet easterly from the center line of Pleasant Street. Reason being that relocate one solely-owned pole on Franklin Street at the request of an apputter and to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications. So, Dave, I'm gonna go back to you to give us a little overview of this. Dave, are you still on the line here? Actually, this is not National Grid. Is there anyone here from Verizon? Is there anyone on the line from Verizon to speak to this petition? Okay, I guess we don't have, I'm a little confused with the fixtures to be owned and used in common by your petitioners. Not quite sure, you know, what that exactly is referring to. We'll do the public hearing, but if we have any questions at the end, maybe we'll leave the hearing open. Counselor Cormier, do you have any questions, Pauline Cormier?
Um, well, no, I don't think I have any questions. I've been reading further, so I think I have a better idea of what they, what they're looking to do and where they're looking to do it.
Yep.
Um, and, and again, I wish that there was someone here, well, someone on the line from Verizon as well. I would like to include this, if we could, with the information that we just went through with National Grid, to include Verizon for any work that they do that, any potential leftover parts of trees, branches, shrubs, that is taken care of before they finish their job.
Yeah, we can probably do a, a general letter and send it out just as reminders to everyone, and we'll include those addresses that you have, and go from there with that.
Yes, that'd be perfect. Thank you very much, Counselor Freedom.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else that, on the Council that has any questions or comments? Again, any other Counselors? Hey, if not, I'll go to the public. Is there anyone on the line who wishes to speak in support of this petition? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of this petition? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? For the third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Hearing none, Mr. President, I'd like to leave this open and maybe clarify that, that comment, both the common, common usage by the petitioners.
That seems, that seems to make sense. We'll eventually, I guess, you're gonna wanna, a new, you wanna continue this public hearing?
Right, yep.
Yeah, okay, that can be done. All right, anything further, Counselor, before we proceed?
Oh, should be off that, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We'll now have the public forum. Public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the Council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The Council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the Council President, clarification may be given. Is there any member of the public, first of all, Madam Clerk, do you have anyone who's signed up or stated a desire to speak in the public forum?
Nobody signed up or stated that they wanted to speak, but we do have three members of the public on.
Okay. Is any member of the public wish to address the City Council in the public forum? I'll ask a second time. Does any member of the public wish to address the City Council in the public forum? And a third and final time, does any member of the public wish to address the City Council in the public forum? Hearing none, I'll declare the public forum closed. We're now, we're now back in session, and we'll move on to communications from the Mayor, starting with appointments.
A measure concerning the Mayor's appointment of Charles Raymond to the Conservation Commission term to expire 4/15/2023.
That appointment is to refer to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Sorry, here I am.
It's okay, okay.
Okay. So this would be regular course, and I will ask the City Clerk to invite Mr. Raymond to participate with us for an interview at the next Council meeting.
Okay.
Very well. Moving on to the next appointment? Very well. Moving on to the next appointment?
A measure concerning the mayor's appointment of Louis Massa to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit Volunteer.
Appointment of Louis Massa is referred also to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this also will, uh, require an interview, uh, but what I would like to do is give it regular course for now and planning down the road, further timing it, um, so that we can interview Mr. Massa at the same time that we interview the, uh, individuals in the next communication. So, we'll be interviewing all of the Office of Emergency Management volunteers together in- in the first August meeting.
Very well. Okay, um, we'll move on then to the next, uh, set of appointments.
A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of the following individuals to the Office of Emergency Management Operations Unit Volunteer: Jason Reagan, Harry Quarles, Darlene Quarles, Lisa Delarone, uh, Marcy Rothenberg, Pamela Sullivan, and IJaz Ahmed.
Okay, those, um, appointments will also be referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Um, it does- it is indicated on the agenda and in the mayor's letter that these are reappointments. However, in this little blank letter, it indicates that they are new volunteers, so they will require an interview. And again, I would like to, um, do that regular course right now, uh, with the, um, the plan that I would further time it so that we can interview all of the OEM volunteers on the same- at the same time of the first August meeting.
Very well, thank you, um, Counselor Feckley. Um, moving on to a appointment, the next appointment, uh, regarding John, uh, or reappointment regarding John Poiroti.
A measure concerning the mayor's reappointment of John Poiroti to the Historical Commission term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, and this, uh, appointment is also referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, regular course, please. No interview necessary.
Very well. Um, and again, moving on to the next appointment, Paul Weiser.
A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Paul Weiser to the Planning Board term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-five.
This appointment is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means?
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, uh, regular course, uh, no interview required. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, uh, I guess we'll take up the next appointment?
A measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Nicholas Badanza to the Disability Commission term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, well, I'm gonna recuse myself from this one because Nicholas is my son. So, and, Madam Chairwoman, if you would, uh, perform, I guess, as acting chair, as well as Ways and Means Chair?
Okay. So, uh, what I would, uh, suggest is that we give this regular course, and we arrange for an interview with Mr. Badanza at our next meeting, and I'll ask the, uh, city clerk to arrange that for me.
No problem.
Okay. Now, we'll move on to orders, starting with C one.
C one, emergency preamble. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of seven million four hundred thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars be made to the stabilization fund, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account, um, in parentheses, under signed fund, uh, undesignated fund balance, and it's regarding to fund emergency needs as they arise in appropriate certified free cash.
Okay, C dash one is referred to the Chairman of Finance. Mr. Cormier, do you want to, um, substantiate, uh, the basis for the emergency preamble so we can vote on that first?
Yeah, just, uh, you know, the emergency nature of this is, you know, we've been waiting for this money for some time now, as we all know, and, uh, given the situation, um, going on, uh, the, uh, administration wants these funds to be put into the stabilization account so that they can be paid back and become available, uh, for us to use immediately in the event that, you know, we have any kind of an emergency going forward with everything going on right now.
Okay.
So, that- that is the emergency is- is, uh, we are still in a state of emergency with COVID and a lot of unknown expenses potentially coming, and they want these funds available ASAP is what I've been told by the controller.
Very well. Um, anything anybody else wants to add before we vote on the emergency preamble?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to clarify a point, if I could.
Counselor Frida.
Counselor Frida.
Yeah.
Um, I- I think it's important to note that, um, this isn't- the request as an emergency isn't necessarily to get the funding in there. It's because we don't have a choice. Um, if that money does not go into, uh, the stabilization account now, that money would not be able to be used for last year's, um, bills, so that would be a major issue. So, um, it- it's not just that we want it in there as soon as possible, but that there's no choice because it wasn't certified till June thirtieth. So, um, I- I think- I think that goes to the issue of going so long without getting this certified. So, I think that's important to note that this is what we have to do.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there any other Counselor that wish- wishes to be heard? Okay, this will be by roll call vote. This is to- on the emergency preamble. I'll start with Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay. The emergency preamble has been approved. Um, do we need an order on this? I don't think so, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We do? Okay.
Uh, this is gonna be- I need to read it now and- and to vote on it, and there is an order for it.
Okay, very well.
Okay, uh, thank you.
Why would there be an order?
Um, Madam Clerk, uh, there is an order for this, correct?
There is an order for it, so it shows that was voted on and they can transfer the funds over with the City Council approval.
It's a transfer, so we have to- there is an order.
Okay, we're gonna pass it first, right?
C- C dash zero one, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requ- requested the appropriation of seven million four hundred thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars be made to the stabilization fund, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Um, this is for undesignated, uh, fund balance regarding, uh, to fund emergency needs as they arise in appropriate certified free cash. So, I think, um, you know, is pretty self-explanatory. We've- we've gotten our free cash certified, and we need to appropriate it to, yeah, stabilization fund, and I certainly am in accord, uh, with this, and I will ask you to poll members of my committee, Mr. President.
Very well. Uh, Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
And Counselor Angelini?
It sounds like a reasonable and prudent request. I will, uh, permit agreement.
Very well. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash one. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I have, uh, I have a- a question as well. Um-
Okay, Counselor Frida.
Maybe it's not- maybe it's not a question as much as I request in the past, and I really would like to have a situation where we can have a better understanding of- of why this is happening to us. Um, you know, to go to June thirtieth is just not right from the number. Um, also, the- the- the Schedule A has not been submitted yet as of today, and if that doesn't get there and the Bureau of the Council doesn't support it, we're gonna lose local aid at the end of the month. We've already got that notice to the city that they're gonna withhold it because it's not being done in a timely manner. Um, I mean, I don't know if the Finance Committee is aware of all that, but it's pretty important that you have that information. We should have a discussion about this. I mean, I don't- I don't get it because if it was done earlier and that could be into free cash, then all it would require would be for the mayor to send it down for us to spend. Now, it's gotta be a two-thirds vote to come out of stabilization, so it- it doesn't make sense that they would wait that long to get it, uh, certified and get it done. So, I- I guess I would really like to know why, and to have an honest discussion, not to blame anybody, to have a discussion as to why these funds. I mean, there's a lot of things that weren't able to be done by department heads. This money had been tied up. This is taxpayer dollars, and I think ha- not having it in a timely manner, I think, is- is not fair to the public, and I think they need to hear what the issue is. If it's something that can be fixed, maybe we all work together and fix it, but to have this certified on June thirtieth, where the only alternative to be able to spend it for last year is to put it into the stabilization because there's nowhere else to go with it, um, is not the way to do it. Um, so, I- I mean, I would really like to have something set up so that we have a- this discussion about it and find out why we're doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. C dash one has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of seven million four hundred thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars be appropriated to the stabilization fund, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is any further discussion? Hearing none, I will do this by roll call as well. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. The order is adopted. Moving on to C dash two.
C dash two. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that an appropriation of one hundred and three thousand dollars be made to the sidewalk expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
C dash two is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well. C dash two is given regular course. Moving on to communications, starting with C dash three.
C dash three. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the council, uh, request the council to accept seven hundred sixty thousand eight hundred five dollars for the city's phase one portion of the CARES Act funding.
C dash three is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
Very well. C dash four.
C dash four. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the council to accept two hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred eight dollars through the Community Development Block Grant COVID-nineteen Program.
C dash four is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, thank you. C dash four is given regular course. C dash five.
C dash five. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request the council to accept eighty-one thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars through the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding through the Department of Justice.
C dash five is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Uh, regular course.
Okay, C dash five is given regular course. Moving on to petitions. First time on the agenda, starting with sixty-nine dash twenty.
Sixty-nine dash twenty. Nellie Molina renewed the second-hand dealer's license for J and J consignment located at two eighty-five Central Street.
Sixty-nine dash twenty is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, regular course, uh, and I will ask the city clerk to arrange for referrals from the Treasurer and Collector and the Police Department.
Very well. Sixty-nine dash twenty is given regular course with referrals to the Treasurer and Collector and Police Department. Moving on to one dash twenty-one.
One dash twenty-one. David R. Cormier, request to install a stop sign against southwest-bound drivers on Comstock Road at Birch Cross Road.
Uh, petition one dash twenty-one is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course with a referral to the traffic agent at the Leamester Police Department.
Very well. Uh, petition one dash twenty-one is given regular course and referred to the traffic agent of the Police Department. Moving on to two dash twenty-one.
Two dash twenty-one. David R. Cormier, request to amend Chapter thirteen, Section thirteen dash thirty-four to read the following. No parking on Albert Drive, both sides for the entire length.
Petition two dash twenty-one is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with a referral to the traffic agent, uh, at the Leamester Police Department.
Very well. Petition two dash twenty-one is given regular course with a referral to the traffic agent at the Police Department. Moving on to three dash twenty-one.
Three dash twenty-one. National Grid and Verizon New England, Inc., request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Nelson Street. National Grid to install one J O pole, remove four J O poles, and relocate four J O poles on Nelson Street, beginning at a point approximately ten feet west of the center line of the intersection of North Main Street, and continuing approximately four hundred feet in a westerly direction. Relocate P four approximately five feet back, PJ approximately four feet back, P two approximately seven feet back, and PL approximately nine feet east and eight feet back. Install new PL dash eighty-four and anchor approximately fifty feet from PL.
Three dash twenty-one is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Yes, Mr. President, regular course, and we need to establish the hearing for seven twenty-four at six fifty-four PM.
Okay, um, you heard the recommendation by the Chairwoman of Public Service to establish to give three dash twenty-one regular course and establish a public hearing date of July twenty-fourth at six fifty-four PM. This will be by roll call. Well, let's do it this way. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Okay, so by a vote of nine to zero, three dash twenty-one is given regular course with a public hearing on July twenty-fourth at six fifty-four PM. Moving on to matters before the City Council, starting with the City of Leamester financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, the latest financial report that I have was received July tenth, twenty twenty. Uh, we began, uh, last fiscal year on July one, twenty nineteen with nineteen million eight hundred ninety thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-five cents. We've earned two hundred and fifty-six thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and fourteen cents in interest. Um, through C dash seventy of the appropriations taken out of stabilization last year, we spent five billion nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twelve cents, which leaves us with a balance of fourteen million one hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Thank you, Ms.- uh, Counselor Cormier, are there any questions on the financial report? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to C seventy-six.
Hold on one second. C dash seventy-six, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request that the attached loan order, uh, be adopted. Uh, this is regarding the No Town and Fall Brook Water Treatment Plant upgrades. Madam Clerk, do- do I have to read this loan order again, or can the reading be waived since it was read at the public hearing?
I don't believe you need to read it again.
Okay, all right. So, um, we did have a public hearing regarding this loan order this evening. Roger Brooks, uh, spoke. Uh, we do have the revenue stream, uh, in place. Uh, he indicated rates were raised, uh, in- back in the February-March timeframe to prepare for this loan order and make sure that we have the revenue stream, uh, for the spending. So, I certainly have concerns with authorizing this loan order, and I'll ask you to- So, I certainly have no issues with authorizing this loan order, and I'll ask you to check with members of my committee, Mr. President.
I will. Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I'm in agreement.
Councilor Angelini?
Uh, Mr. President, I'm in agreement, but if I could take a minute?
Why don't we do that? Let me qualify your recommendation first, and then I'll give the council an opportunity to speak. You've heard the MS recommendation of C, of the Finance Committee to grant C dash seventy-six. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Angelini didn't want to be heard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just, before we, before we vote on this loan order, I just wanted to provide a little bit of history so that folks would know, uh, why this tax money is being spent. It's a lot of money, six million dollars. Um, several members of the council I know are aware of the history. I know, uh, um, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr was a, a board of director of the Leamester Land Trust. The Chairman as well was a member of the board. Uh, in interest of disclosure, I was the executive director. And we were doing some routine sampling and discovered a sewage issue in the Shea Brook. And upon doing further testing, we discovered elevated levels of trihalomethanes, which is a, uh, a reaction from organic material and, uh, and the chlorine or disinfectant used at the treatment plant. And, uh, there were some discrepancies in the reported, uh, levels with what the other testing was showing. Um, the Mayor and the Board Department took decisive action to remedy that, and they've done a great job getting those trihalomethanes, the total organic carbons, um, reduced significantly. Uh, the problem with these trihalomethanes, um, pregnant women, young children, elderly, and folks with immune, uh, system compromise, um, are very, uh, uh, very susceptible to elevated levels of trihalomethanes. Um, it's, uh, it's, it's absorbed through your skin, transdermally. So, avoid, when you avoid drinking it, it's obviously, uh, not a solution. Um, I know that we did have a, it was the council who commented during the hearing that, uh, you just have to put the water in your refrigerator overnight, but that's pretty difficult to do, to bathe with, uh, water that's been in your refrigerator. So, I just want to let folks know how important this issue is, and, um, it's been a, a long road, but it appears this, uh, Mr. Brooks has found, uh, an adequate solution. And I would urge, uh, members of the, yeah, council to vote in favor of this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Angelini. Is any other member of the council wishes to address this before we vote?
Um, yes, Mr. President. This is Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Thank you, Councilor.
Um, I just wanted to thank, uh, the Board five Counselor, Councilor Angelini, for that explanation, because sometimes these problems go on for some period of time, and I think people forget often, you know, the context of the problem that actually led to a big expenditure like this. But you're absolutely right. I mean, for years off and on, No Town's had some issues and, um, I think this is a, um, uh, you know, certainly, um, part of a long process of remedying those, um, those problems and concerns. So, I just wanted to say that I think it was helpful to have that context.
Thank you, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr. Is there any other councilor which wishes to be heard before we vote? Okay, well, hearing none, um, we'll proceed by roll call, starting with Councilor Frida.
Yay.
Councilor, uh, Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
No, I'm actually going to recuse myself from this vote, um, as I have a potential conflict of interest.
All right, thank you, Councilor. Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Ardinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero. C seventy-six has been adopted. Moving on to C seventy-seven.
C dash seventy-seven, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars be made to the Conservation Commission expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the wetlands fee reserved for appropriation account. I did have a conversation today with, uh, Angie, uh, Chabowski, the, um, Conservation Agent, and she did indicate to me that there was an issue, um, before conservation, um, that was pretty lengthy and required, uh, them to spend some of their funds. Uh, it was a, an issue regarding, uh, Mary Avenue and some wetlands there. So, um, you know, they did, they did, uh, have to spend, you know, some money, um, and, and they are allowed to use it out of this wetlands, uh, fee reserved for appropriation account. Um, so they just want to, uh, it's just a simple transfer for them. Uh, they basically have used the money for what it is, um, what's in it, what, for what it's intended for. So, I certainly have no issue with this, and I'll ask you to poll members of my committee.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I'm in agreement.
And Councilor Angelini?
I am in agreement.
You've heard the MS recommendation of Finance to grant C dash seventy-seven. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Ardinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. C dash seventy-seven is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars be appropriated to the Conservation Commission expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the wetlands fee, the wetlands fees reserved for appropriation account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Ardinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor, uh, and myself would be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. The order is adopted. Moving on to C seventy-eight, we need to ratify, uh, the emergency preamble passed at the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. C dash seventy-eight, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of thirty-five thousand dollars be made to the Police Department overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the Police, uh, Salary and Wages Account. Um, this is just a ratification of the vote that we took, uh, back in June, and I am, uh, still in agreement with it. And I'll ask you to poll members of my committee.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I'm in agreement.
Councilor Angelini?
I will make it unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to ratify the emergency preamble represented by C seventy-eight. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of ratifying the emergency preamble, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, the emergency preamble is ratified. Moving on to C seventy-nine.
Mr. President, uh, C seventy-nine, I am going to ask the clerk to take care of that, uh, because I do have a family member in the Fire Department, and I, as usual, need to abstain from any, uh, votes for Fire Department, uh, overtime salary and wages. Um, and also, I am also gonna have to, uh, recuse myself from sixty-seven dash twenty as, uh, that is an, uh, a piece of equipment that will be owned by my employer, so I, I just want to be aware of that.
Okay, if, if the clerk could read C seventy-nine, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. C dash seventy-nine, emergency preamble, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of thirty thousand dollars be made to the Fire Department overtime account, same amount to be transferred from the Fire Department Salary and Wages Account. Uh, Mr. President, this is similar to C dash seventy-eight. It was already, uh, granted, and we're just, uh, seeking to have that ratified this evening.
Very well. Uh, Councilor Angelini?
I'm supportive of it.
Okay, so you heard the MS recommendation of Finance to ratify C dash seventy-nine. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of ratifying C dash seventy-nine, please say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Hearing none. C seventy-nine is ratified by a vote of eight to zero. Councilor David Cormier abstaining. Moving on to Public Service, uh, sixty-seven dash twenty.
Public Service, sixty-seven dash twenty, Verizon New England, request permission to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary anchors, guides, and other such sustaining and protective fixtures to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following public ways or ways. Um, the recommendation, I mean, we left the, um, all the reason being, uh, relocating one solely-owned pole on Franklin Street at the request of an abouter, and to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications, um, which was on Franklin Street. I'm trying to think if that's the one we left the hearing open, or...
It, it, it is.
It is.
Yeah, okay. Um, so the recommendation, we get a clarification of, um, the petitioners, um, you can poll my committee, but my recommendation would be to give it further time.
And could we establish, uh, a continued hearing date at the same time, I think?
Sure.
Now, um, Councilor, I mean, Clerk, Madam Clerk, what do you recommend for a public hearing date on that?
I would recommend July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, at six fifty-three P.M.
Okay. All right, so, um, I'll check with Councilor, uh, Feckley?
Yes, I'm in agreement. I have some questions regarding this as well, and I would like to, um, have, uh, a representative from Verizon answer them, so, yes.
Very well.
And put a hearing file.
Okay, Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
All right, so you've heard the MS recommendation of the Public Service Committee to give sixty-seven dash twenty further time and to continue the public hearing to July twenty-fourth at six fifty-three P.M. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President?
Your abstention is noted.
And if, if I may, I just, uh, offer some clarity, even though I can't vote on this, July twenty-fourth is a Friday.
Okay.
Hold on one second, let me fix my... Twenty-seventh, July twenty-seventh.
I'm gonna go have, we're gonna go back later on and fix that other one. All right, so the, I, the MS recommendation of Public Service is to give sixty-seven dash twenty further time, continue the public hearing to July twenty-seventh at six fifty-three P.M. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? By a vote of eight to zero, Councilor Corm, David Cormier abstaining. Sixty-seven dash twenty is given further time with a continued hearing date of July twenty-seventh at six fifty-three P.M. Moving on to sixty-eight dash twenty.
Sixty-eight dash twenty, National Grid, request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public ways. Vinson Street, National Grid, will install one S.O. pole on Vinson Street, beginning at a point approximately twenty feet south, southwest to the center line of the intersection of Mechanic Street, and continuing approximately two hundred and seventy feet in a south-southwest direction. For request of customer at seventeen Vinson Street, National Grid will remove a tree guide and install a new stub pole with anchor. P two dash eighty-four will be set approximately forty-three south, forty-three feet south of pole number two, and an anchor will be set approximately six feet from pole two dash eighty-four. Location approximately as shown on the plan that was detached. Uh, we had a public hearing tonight. There was a representative from, uh, National Grid, uh, who gave a speech here. So, we poll my committee, but the recommendation would be to grant.
Thank you very much, Councilor. Councilor Feckley? Councilor Feckley?
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Councilor Cor, Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
All right, you've heard the MS recommendation of Public Service to grant sixty-eight dash twenty. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call. Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Ardinger?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini? Did I miss Councilor Angelini?
No, yay, Councilor.
Councilor, uh, Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. Sixty-eight dash twenty is granted. Moving on to Ways and Means Appointments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, appointments, a measure confirming the Mayor's reappointment of Rockold Palmieri to the Historical Commission, term to expire April fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. This is given regular course at the last meeting. Uh, Mr. Palmieri is a very well-known and valued citizen of the City of Leamester. He's done some wonderful work with the Historical Commission, and I would be very pleased to, um, confirm his reappointment, and I'm gonna ask you to, uh, go to my committee.
Very well. Uh, Councilor, um, Councilor Frida?
Yes, I support that.
And Councilor John Dombrowski?
Absolutely, I support that.
You've heard the MS recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant the reappointment, uh, confirm the reappointment of Rockold Palmieri. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. This is Councilor Frida.
Yes.
Uh, just to, just to add, I mean, we, uh, Councilor Feckley said it well on, uh, Rocky being well-known, but, I mean, he's just everywhere with his dedication and his little camera, and he's just, um, just a real, um, bustle. So, um, I'm happy to be voting to reappoint him.
I, uh, I couldn't agree more. Um, Mr. Palmieri, um, was not only, um, extremely helpful and, uh, with his dedication and service to the city and particularly the Historical Commission, but he also, um, a number of years ago, scanned well over fifteen hundred, um, glass negatives, which were part of the Historical Society collection, very, very valuable Leamester, Leamester images. Um, so they're all digitized now and, and much more accessible to the public, uh, for use. So, he, he's given, um, the public may not be totally, uh, acquainted with all of the work that Mr. Palmieri has done over the years, but it is substantial, and we owe him a debt of gratitude. Um, is there anybody else that would like to be heard before we vote? Okay, this will be by roll call. Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Ardinger?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. The appointment of Rockold Palmieri is confirmed. Um, is there any, there's no new business listed. Under old business, I think we need to go back and fix that public hearing date on, uh...
It's on the poll. Um, I have it noted. It is.
On three, three dash twenty-one?
Three twenty-one, yes.
Okay. Um, we had inadvertently suggested seven twenty-four and voted on that. It, uh, should be seven twenty-seven at six fifty-four, correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
I'll just ask the council to ratify the corrected vote. Um, is there any discussion on that?
I'm not quite sure why Councilor Cormier doesn't want to be there on a Friday night, but...
I'll be here on a Friday with me.
You, you, don't ask him to do that, Councilor, because he might...
No, I won't.
Okay, um, I'll tempt him. Um, all right, just, uh, if there's no further discussion, uh, all those in favor of just ratifying the correct public hearing date for three dash twenty-one at seven twenty-seven, um, as opposed to seven twenty-four, six fifty-four P.M., please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? No one is opposed. Uh, we have no other old business. Is there anything under the community? Anyone opposed? No one is opposed? Uh, we have no other old business. Is there anything under the community calendar?
Uh, Mr. President, uh, Councilor Frida? Just a, a little note that we lost, uh, uh, a great gentleman that's put a lot of work and has been very instrumental to the City of Leominster, and Father Bob Russo at, uh, Saint Cecilia's. Uh, he's, he's been involved with us on Veterans Memorial Day programs and, um, has just been such a, a big part of Leominster, and, you know, his passing is, will definitely be felt, and, uh, just wanted to, to mention, uh, for everyone to take a minute and just think about him.
That's very well said, Councilor. Um, is there a, anything else in the community calendar? Anybody else have anything else? Um, okay, before we adjourn, I might mention, uh, I might suggest a moment of silence for, for Father Russo?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Councilors. We are adjourned. I hope all has a, have a good... Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Bye.
Bye.